It's past seven o'clock. Welcome to the Sherburne zoning board of appeals. June 14, 2023. And first we have some administrative matters. I'd like to welcome our newest member. Junior for now, member or associate member for now. Zach McBride, and we're really, really, really thrilled to have you. So thank you for joining us. And by the same token, there we gain a member, but maybe we might lose a member too.
Ron.
Maybe, Rick.
Yeah. I was hoping. You can't blame a guy for trying. Ron, when did you first come on the zoning board of appeals?
I can't remember. It's been that long.
Yeah.
I guessed about 2010, but.
Right, so, so let's call you a rounded, you know, 13 or 14 years, which is a very long time. On a very difficult board through a lot of very difficult matters. And I know I speak for myself and I bet I speak for Jonathan and Jeanie and everybody that you've been, you've been invaluable. I'm a voter.
A great colleague.
Yeah. Voters.
Great, dependable. Insightful colleague. Thank you.
Right, and, and, and who does not come from, no disrespect to us, Zach and Jonathan, who's not come from things from a legal standpoint. It's been enormously valuable for him to say, wait, this thing is a lousy design. And stuff had, wait, you fellows didn't measure the side to like setbacks and all the other wonderful things you bring to the table. So I, I really want to thank you for your service to the town. It's been, it's been terrific and we can have a little, little zoom round of applause and thank you.
Thank you. Those are kind words.
Now, having said that, having said that. I wonder if you'd be willing to stay on for the duration of tonight's matters. Just because you bring some continuity to Dunkin' Donuts and then other things. And so don't, don't hang on up on us yet, but we can't keep you beyond your, beyond your appointed time.
Okay.
And Zach, you've already earned a fabulous promotion to full member. Isn't that awesome?
Fantastic. That's lightning quick, Zach. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't ask what second prize might be.
Yeah.
All right. So we've got a pretty full agenda. Let's get to it. I think first up is petition 2023-3. Barski Realty Trust, Six Powder House Road. I think our esteemed building inspector is on as well. Chris, do you want to set the table and then maybe we'll hear from? I think then there's Gary. I see Gary on the screen, so we'll hear from Gary in response. Chris, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Yes, so. Following some questions from the assessor, just sort of about what users were permitted over on that site, I arranged to have a meeting over there with Gary. Just to sort of go over what the special permit was for and see the site I'd never been on there because it's, it's not really on my normal route of travel. And anyway, so we sort of went through the thing one point at a time. And you know, it's, it's somewhat in compliance with the decision that's there and there's a few things that aren't. You know, it's, it's being used as a, as a storage facility for a bunch of, you know, like landscape contractors and other people. There's not more than five tenants. You know, they're keeping their stuff mostly where they're supposed to keep their stuff, but there's some material that's being stored where the permit says that it shouldn't be stored. In addition to that, there's a few shipping container, storage unit type things that you know, aren't shown on any of the site plans or mentioned in the permit. So the question came up of are these things supposed to be here or not, or are they? You know, can we, can we get any sort of? Yes or no on these things to make sure that, that, you know, this is what the board intended when they issued the permit, you know? And that's about it. So I ended up writing a short little violation notice, just so we have something to work off of. It's just five points. I think you guys have a copy of it, I hope. This sort of spells out where I saw things that weren't quite in line with what was, you know, written in the decision from the last time around.
Awesome. And Mr. Labarski. You're up. You're the petitioner. What do you say about all that?
Good evening. Good evening. Good work. Chris did an amazing job. He described everything exactly as I understand it. So we took over the operation from the previous owner, Ken Fitzpatrick, who was the one who initially applied for the, for the permit. So we kind of for a successor of the record. So apparently, yes, some, some items I wasn't aware of that Chris pointed out that we are not compliant with. So one of them is, yes, storage of containers. These containers are not installed by us. They are installed by, by the tenants for the sole purpose of keeping the valuable equipment or somewhere, because there is no, no, no building, so to speak, for every one of them. And obviously landscaping businesses, they have winter operations and they have a summer operations. And so they have to keep somewhere equipment for the winter and then in the winters they have to keep the equipment somewhere. So they asked me if, if they can bring temporary containers and I thought that I have discretion to give them a permission. Apparently I do not have such authority. But that's where we are. So we don't know how to proceed forward with these containers. And two other violations are relatively minor, I think. And I would like to ask the board, I sent a letter to ask to lift some of the requirements. One of the requirements is to allow us to keep, for the tenants to keep some of the materials on the eastern side of the parcel. Just because the, the shape of the parcel is, is, is not is not useful, meaning that a lot of space is lost just, just due to configuration. And, and there is a, there is a road that these cars have to drive. And then there is a space next to the railroad where they park their cars. So this tenant, they need the space to put some of the materials and, and snowplows somewhere that doesn't interact in the activities. So they usually they put them on a, on a, on a, on a property line next to the heritage restaurant. And we do have a fence that shields off everything. So nothing can be seen from outside our parcel. So I'd like to ask the board to, to, to remove that requirement obligation that keeps us from storing this, this snowplows and some limited materials on the eastern side of the of the, of the parcel. The next thing that I would like to ask the board is, is to remove the requirement for marking of the space. So there is a requirement that asks me to, to mark an area on my parcel that is dedicated to each tenant. And again, it's just due to impractical reasons. Reason number one, they have, they move a lot of heavy machinery that just makes it impractical to keep something permanent. And the second of all, again, due to different activities during seasons. There is no fixed area dedicated to each tenant. So they, they, it's the lines between tenants constantly moving back and forth, just, just again, due to fluctuations in the seasons. And, and I think that's, that's it.
Okay. All right. So let me play back what I think I'm hearing because then I want to hear from anybody else who wants to speak. But it sounds like you'd like your permit renewed. You'd like the condition about delineating marking the spaces waived. You'd like to be able to store at least some equipment on the east side where they've got their snowplows now. And I can see why with a big truck with a big snowplow, it'd be easier to just pull it up there, raise it up, unhook it and drop it. That's what they did. And I missed one. And the containers. And, and probably what you're asking is, I've got, I've got eight containers on there now, and I'd like to be able to keep those eight containers in roughly those locations. That's, that's kind of the ask.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Excellent.
Unless Chris has anything to add.
There you go, Chris.
There I am. One of those shipping containers, the one that is sort of on the north side. I have an issue with the setbacks. I don't think that that meets the setback for the zone for a structure. It's a, it's a budding residence district there and it's, I think it's only 10 feet from the lot line. I think we're supposed to be. Oh, refresh my memory. 15, I think. Hold on, let me pull up his zoning file.
Okay. And that's container number one on the sketch plan, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So side setback. Okay. Got it. Zach, just, just to catch you up here, everything that is a, a problem for the applicant here is a condition we wrote as opposed to some objective provision in the bylaw. So, and, and he's up for renewal anyway. So that's why all this comes up. Okay. Is there anyone here from a public? Oh, I guess, sorry, one more, one more question for Chris or Jeannie, if you know, has anybody complained? Has the heritage complained? The railroad complained?
No.
Okay, no complaints. Okay. Anybody here, anybody here from the public to speak to the petition one way or another? For or against? Now's your chance. Ed Rose, you're a neighbor, but you're across the street. You got nothing to say, right? You're muted, Ed.
I'm getting online. Yeah, I have no problem with them doing what they want to do over there. It's absolutely perfect. You don't see them, you don't hear from them. Absolutely the way it should be.
All right.
Let's make it easy for them. So.
All right. A neighbor, if not in a butter in favor. There we go. Okay. Board members, how do you feel about this? Our emeritus board member, Mr. Stefan, I invite you to go first.
I'm not sure. I, you know, I think we have to satisfy the building inspector in some way. And, you know, if we can do that. I would be happy to go along with any scheme that, you know, meets his approval.
Okay. And, and Chris, I assume you're, it's not a beef here. Your, your concern here is that the permit says one thing and what's happening on the ground is another. And you just think those two should mesh.
Correct. I would like to see the two things line up so that should we, if we do get a complaint, for example, you know, we're not saying, oh, well, it's just been this way for years and it's fine. I would like to be able to say, you know, condition seven allows eight containers to be placed in this location and that way there's no, there's no question about it.
Okay, understood. Got it. Thank you.
Are you looking at those containers, Chris, as an accessory shed? Is that how you're looking at those?
Typically what we've dealt with them as far as like building code, we, you know, we generally issue a permit because they almost always exceed the square footage for like a commercial shed. But we, but we treat them, we just give them building permit and say, here it is. Make sure it meets the, the structure setbacks, which conveniently on this property are quite small. There's no rear yard setback, which would be an issue on this property, but luckily we don't have a rear yard setback to worry about. You know, we only have a side setback to a residence zone. So it actually works out really nicely. You know, should you find it in your, you know, that this is something that you can approve of. It will basically meet all the zoning requirements for, for an accessory structure.
So from a process standpoint, just to clarify, you're just saying this is a permissible activity? And that this is, and Gary, it seems like this is driven by your tenants. So.
Yeah, I don't think that these things are being used in a way that's outside of what the, what the permit is for. You know, the permit is for landscaping contractors and that type of, of business to exist there. And they're using these storage units as part of their business. So I'm not, it's not like somebody's, you know, you know, setting up a brewery in one or doing some other weird thing in, in the, in the storage sheds. They're storing their landscaping equipment and materials. It's just not something that was ever shown on any site plans or, or referenced in the decision.
Okay, but Zach raises an interesting question. If they wanted to put 50 containers on the site and we let them, would that violate anything else in zoning? Well, it's their use as a landscape business, right? And you're saying these aren't buildings because they're not permanent.
Correct.
So they're essentially just big storage boxes to you.
They are, it's not even mine. I don't pay. Also meaning that once a tenant leaves, they, they have to, they have to take it with them.
Right. Gary, I agree with you, but, but, but if each of these buildings had a foundation and utilities and was permanently attached to the ground, that'd be a very different.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. Zach, are you okay with that then? That they're just big boxes essentially?
Yeah, that's fine. As long as I think we're just creating a condition that's fair and in line with, with, with the regulations, right? So if it said, you know, if there's nine now, do we give 10 or do we say that there's two per tenant? I guess, what's the rule that we're trying to establish, right?
We'll, we'll make up the rule and we'll write it.
Yeah.
Jeannie, when did you send us a copy of the prior decision? I'm trying to find it.
It was sent, it was sent with Gary's request to make the changes. Let me see if I can go backwards.
With, with 18 conditions, I think. Anybody can find it quickly is invited to pull it up.
I have it off the land records. There's 19 conditions, hold on, 20 conditions.
Can you, can you, can you share your screen, Chris?
I don't know how.
Okay.
Hold on.
What's the booking page?
Booking page is, hold on, let me zoom in. 68098. Page 16.
68098, page 16. All right, Jeannie, I'll race you so you can get it up faster.
It's going to have to be you because I have to leave and start that other meeting.
All right, fine. Everybody just hang for a second.
I'll be right back.
Okay. Registry search record, search records. 68 098. Page 16. I'm getting nothing.
Oh, so.
68098, sorry?
First page is 14. Sorry, continues.
Okay, hang on. Once the registry website freaks out and says, no, it's very hard to get it calmed down again.
Yeah, it doesn't like it then.
Here we go. Here we go. View image. Okay. So Mr. Fitch, if I can get this up, what do you want to see? The whole thing from the beginning?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't really remember it.
Okay.
I don't know to what extent Mr. Labarski is asking us to change that decision.
Well, let's see. Well, you were present for the hearing. You're on the hook. You won't, you can't, we can't walk from this one. Okay, let me see, let me see if I can share it. Okay. Do you see it now?
Well, I can, yes, I can. Thank you.
Do you want me to make it bigger?
Well, you could make it a little bigger.
There's that option and then there's this option.
Oh, that's beautiful. Okay.
Okay. All right. So, so, so tell me where we want to go. I've got the page control here.
Well, you could scroll down a little bit here.
Registry doesn't let me scroll, lets me go in, in whole pages. So let's see, let's see if there's anything further down this page. Okay, so we voted three to nothing to grant the special permit to allow the operation, construction, landscaping services. Following conditions. Let me know when you're ready for the next page, sir.
Well, I guess I'd like to know what Mr. Labarski's done before we go to the next page. To make sure that his, well, how is he exercising his responsibility? The compliance of all of its tenants with the requirements of the conditions of the special permit.
Well, I think the position that Mr. Candy would say is right now he's not doing that. You know, right, right now he's out of compliance with his permit. He's asking us to change the permit to fit his level of compliance, which we do not have to do, but which we can do if we choose.
Why is this necessary for the tenant's business?
I'm sorry, what is?
Why, why are the existing conditions which are not in compliance with this special permit necessary for the tenant?
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for your question. So containers are typically used to store valuable equipment that landscape businesses use in their, in their operations, such as chainsaws, like different shovels. There is no other way to store any valuable equipment then. Because landscaping businesses are seasonal businesses, meaning that operations during summer is different than operations during the winter. So during winters they have to store somewhere their summer equipment, available equipments that can be stolen or anything. So this company, they, they put the containers just for the storage purposes only. Does it, does this answer your question?
Yeah. Jonathan, all summer the containers are filled with snow blowers and all winter they're filled with lawn mowers.
Correct.
Okay, well, the, all, all the photographs show a pretty messy situation there.
Do you want to see the next page?
Sure.
Gasoline or diesel fuel. No lawnmowers, chainsaw should be operated. It's not, they're not being operated, they're being stored. Grinding, splitting, processing. No require any waste. Sketch plan showing the storage should be placed on file. Do you want to see the next one?
Sure.
I can go back. I've got the, you know, this is within my skill set, turning pages. I trained 40 years for this.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, now I recall why I don't remember this decision. I was a mere associate member when.
Oh, sorry.
I did not vote on this.
You didn't exactly raise your hand as I recall either though. Well, whatever. It's the decision we voted. We can change it if we wish. And, and that's the question to us. Do we wish? Chris, I guess, well, first of all, is there any other questions for any other board member? But I'd, I'd probably continue the discussion.
Well, the question I have is, what needs to be modified to satisfy Mr. Labarski?
Well, I think one thing that is not in here at all, Chris, straighten me out if I have it wrong, is the use of the storage containers is just not in here, period.
Correct.
So if we're going to let him have storage containers, whether it's the number he proposes or some lower number, we'd have to change that.
Okay.
The other thing is if, if, if we're not going to let them store all their plows in the summer up against the fence, they'll have to move those. And that may be a, you know, ultimately there his tenants, they have to do what he says and he has to do what we say. But they won't really like that very much because it won't be as, it won't be anywhere near as convenient for them to move the plows to the other side because the containers are there. Right, Chris?
Absolutely. So just so that we are aware of what we're trying to modify. Condition five, which is the one that specifies the storage should be limited to the western side of the driveway. Condition five also specifies that the tenant spaces should be delineated on the ground. We have a sketch plan. And then we're going to be adding a condition related to the storage, storage containers.
Right. So.
One question about the storage containers is there's a designated area for storage of exterior storage. So the question is that the storage containers become additive to the 300 by 40 foot area or inclusive or a part of?
I would say that they are, they're part of.
They're, they're, they're in it. They're within it. Because the parcel, and Chris, again, correct me if I have it wrong, is actually even longer and skinnier than it shows when you drive up to it. And look, there's like the doggy, doggy playdates, I think is up at the other end, right? Or something like that?
Correct. It runs, it runs back quite a ways. Yep. So yeah, all these storage units are within the, the area that is designated for outside storage. It's just we're putting a bunch of little buildings essentially in that, within that space.
Little boxes, not little buildings, little boxes.
Little boxes. Little boxes with building permits.
Exactly.
So are, are these, are these storage containers on the site now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And, and Noah Butter has complained.
No.
My memory, when we reviewed this way back when, was that there were concerns of some of Butters. Does, does that ring a bell with either you, Jonathan, or Rick?
I, I, I thought there were, but I thought the, I thought it was a matter of the fencing. I thought maybe at the time and heritage isn't here tonight. But I think at the time heritage said, look, just as long as we can't see it from our parking area. You know, that's what we care about.
Okay.
And they're, and they're not here tonight. So that.
I will also make a note that I don't think the storage units impact the intensity of the use in any way. It doesn't mean that there's going to be more traffic or any, any other, you know, things happening on the site beyond what was already supposed to be happening there. It's just a, an additional way of storing stuff that was, you know, if we were going to allow them to store things outside, now we're going to allow them to store them in these little boxes too. So to me, it doesn't massively impact the actual use.
Right. And I would, since, since they're lawn mowers and snow blowers, I'd much rather have them actually under a cover. Because then they don't have runoff.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
So, so we would be making provision then for eight storage containers in condition five?
Right. I'm not, I'm not lobbying you for it, but that's the, that would be the, that, that's the ask. I think, is it eight or is it nine? Let's see, where's the last?
Eight.
Eight and, and eight and one, here it is. And, and one of them would have to be moved. Number one would have to be moved to comply with zoning.
Yep.
Is there, is there room for one more, Chris? Because just for practicality, if there's five tenants, need to. I would.
I think, I think it would be practical to have the decisions allowed two per tenant or something like that. There is room that you could shift these things around. You know, I think it'd be anything beyond that, they should come back and like modify the decision or something like that.
Let's, can we say two per tenant and, and not more than X total without coming back to us? Because in theory you could have, you know, 15 more tenants.
May I say something? I have one of, one tenant is very pretty big, Hamilton Company. They take almost a third of the whole space. So
Great.
I don't know how many containers do they have in fact, but I have small, much smaller tenants who have just one container. They don't, they base a quarter of what the large tenant pays. So.
Okay. So Mr. Labarski is, do you think eight containers is enough to get you through till the next time your permit comes up?
Absolutely. I don't foresee any more than that. Absolutely.
All right. And then they can trade amongst themselves.
They can. Absolutely.
Zach, would that work for you?
Sounds good to me.
All right. Jonathan, you've disappeared off my screen because we're still in, in gallery view, but I bet you're there.
I'm here and that's fine.
Okay. So do we have consensus? So do we have consensus? That, and, and by the way, I'm not lobbying for this, I'm, 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 I'm good with any outcome. That we, we modify our decision to say um, under container, uh, on containers, he can have eight containers in the conditions, in the positions roughly shown on this plan, except container number one has to be moved to be in compliance with zoning. And that adds to, um, storage on the east, they can store snowplows on the east in the locations where they are now. So that we don't have a whole bunch of containers piled up in the east next to the heritage. And Gary, that would be a hard place for them to put them anyway, because of the hillside.
Right, yeah. And also if possible, I'd like to ask, uh, uh, permission to store some limited materials. Uh, again, just for the same purpose that typically they store their vehicles on the west side. And they need access, uh.
I see, I see, there, 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 there's been material, yeah, there's, there's some, one of the landscapers has some, some lovely stones. Um, that he's storing in the east. Um, Jonathan, Zach, Ron, how do you feel about that? It's in one of the pictures.
I, I would, I would push, I would say no to the materials, because I think materials have a tendency to be left when tenants leave, uh, snowplows don't. So, uh, that's, that's, that's my perspective.
Okay.
Well, if tenants leave, it's gonna be my responsibility to clean everything after them, so it's. Uh, just as a, as a landlord, I don't want any, any garbage or, or trash on my properties.
Right, but, 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 but I, I, I'm sympathetic with Zach that there's a difference between a snowplow where it's on the end of a long vehicle and you kind of have to put it in a head in situation to get it off. Go ahead. Please go ahead, sorry.
It's just that, the, again, the, the ways the parcel is structured to that, it's, it's a long piece of parcel. And the road goes in the middle of it. And if, if the board doesn't allow me to use the space on the east side of the, uh, driveway, then the space is practically, uh, useless. I, I cannot use it for anything, any purpose. Because it's not enough to, to store a car or, or, or a vehicle uh, or equipment, so it's, it's kind of lost space for, and I already have a lot of, uh, very little usable space, because again, due to the shape. So if, if the board limits my, my options, it just limits, uh, the, my usage uh, benefits of that land.
Okay, I, I, I hear you on that. Board members, how do you feel about storage of non-plows on the east?
Well, the, uh, those materials are not visible, uh, from, uh, perspective of in a butter or anybody nearby.
Well, we, we, we could condition it that we could say the materials could only be behind the area that's actually a fence. Cause Gary, I think some of it's a fence and some of it's, uh, arbor v- bitey trees, right?
No, no, I have a fence everywhere.
Yeah, fence all, okay, so.
Yeah.
So it's a six foot stockade fence.
It's not, no one can see anything. It's, it's completely secluded area, no one can see anything.
Okay, well, that's fine with me then.
Okay, Zach?
I think that's fine. I just, you know, uh, uh, having recently cleaned up a hundred years of Sherp Horn's trash, uh, myself and my own property, I, I can see the the inclination to leave things behind, so that's, that's what I'm trying to prevent against, so.
Well, Ron, Ron and I both live in much older antiques, come on over, pal. We'll, we'll, we'll show, we'll show you some junk. Um, yeah, okay, I get it, totally. Um, all right, well, are we ready to, uh, to try to come to a decision here?
And also just for you, uh, this, uh, parcel has been operated for landscaping businesses for dozens of years and and Chris can probably say there is no trash, it's very well kept, kept. Uh, no trash, no, no trash, no garbage, no, nothing, nothing.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I, I mean, I, Gary, I drove past it the other day myself, it's not, um, it's not the Rose Kennedy Greenway, but it's not supposed to be. Um, but neither, but neither is it a garbage dump. Um, you know, it's a landscaper's yard, and, uh, those are often not, there's a reason they're screened.
Right, right.
Okay. Not having written it yet, um, but what if, what if I were to propose to my fellow board members that we allow them to, uh, store, um, materials and plows on the east, but no storage containers on the east. That we give them, uh, the right to have up to eight, the, the eight containers in the location so, shown, provided that container number one gets moved into zoning compliance. And that we, uh, eliminate the condition that, um, that each tenant's space be delineated. If we did that, Mr. Zoning Inspector, Mr. Building Inspector, would, would we, would we have something you could administer?
That would be fine with me, that certainly puts us in, into a, a compliant, uh, position on this one.
All right, Mr. Lebarsky, could you live with that?
Absolutely, yeah, I'm very cool, thank you, thank you so much.
All right, so, um, I hereby move that, uh, the petition uh, for their renewal be granted with the following modifications to condition five. Uh, and, and those modifications are that, um, storage can be on the east side of the driveway, provided it's in all events otherwise in compliance with the permit and behind the screening fence. That, um, storage containers of, of the types that are there now today. Um, eight of them in the locations shown on the, uh, plan provided to the board, provided that container number one shall be relocated to be, uh, the correct offsets, uh, to satisfy zoning. Um, and that the requirement that all tenant spaces be delineated, be removed. I think that gets it. That's my motion. Sir, second? Okay, moved and seconded. Let's discuss it just a little bit before we vote on it. Chris Candy, do you think that hits the mark for what you need?
I think that's, that's a, a, a bunch of reasonable changes and it certainly works for me.
All right, Mr. Lebarsky, you can live with it too, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, so, uh, moved and seconded. All in favor, uh, we have to do by roll call if those are on Zoom. All in favor, vote aye. Novak votes aye.
Pitch aye.
Mr. Stefan, you still there? Are you, are you in Tahiti? He's back, all right. Um, Mr. McBride, you don't have to vote, uh, but I, I hope we have your support.
You do.
Motion carries, um, all right. Gary will write it up.
Thank you so much and for how many years, uh, Chairman?
Uh, I think it, I, I think, I think it was five, but we renew for the, um, for the same time.
It's five.
Yeah, okay, oh geez, back, okay, so, so for five years. But, um, do, you know, they are your tenants and, uh, it's your job to keep them in line and I know you can do that and I know you will do that, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, great, uh, all right, next up. Next up is Sean Patrick Hogan, Kelly Hogan, twenty-four North Main Street, petition two oh two three dash four. I think this is a straight up, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna stop sharing the screen. Uh, Mr. Hogan, I think this is probably a straight up renewal of your financial services place.
Right, yes.
Any, any changes to your sign, any changes to your operation?
Oh, no change at all.
Genie's waving hello, but I think she's trying to say she wants to be for five years.
Five years.
Okay. I'm stupid, but sometimes I can get to the hit.
You're good.
All right, um, so the request is for a straight up renewal, five years, exactly the same sign, exactly the same everything. Is there anyone from the public to speak about this, neighbor Ed?
I'll speak, they're great neighbors, excellent Sean and Kelly are beautiful. Let's keep going, I'm here for Alex, so, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, uh, any, any, and, and anybody else to speak? Uh, from, from the public on this? Nope, okay.
Yes, I would also like to support Sean, he's, uh, doing amazing business, keeping his property looking beautiful. Uh, it's, it's a great benefit to the, to the show, so I support.
Thanks, Gary.
Zach, it isn't always a loving at the ZBA, but you're getting it tonight.
That's, that's great, it's a good, it's a good welcome. You're full, you're.
All right, excellent, thank you. Um, all right, anybody else to speak for or against from the public on the petition for twenty-four North Main Street? Board members. How do we feel about this?
Motion to renew.
Motion to renew, wow, okay, I, I, I discussed a little bit, but, but, but that's kind of, I go exactly where Zach is, which is this was a, a very good outcome for a functionally obsolete property. And now I've got somebody who wants it and is taking great care of it and he put up a nice sign.
Yeah.
What's, what's not to like? I, 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 I would move that the renewal be granted for five years on all the same terms and conditions as last time. That's my motion. Sir, second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Stefan, one of his last acts, this is very emotional. Seconds, all right, moved and seconded, any further discussion? All right, let's vote it. All in favor of, uh, extending twenty twenty-three dash four, twenty-four North Main Street? Same terms and conditions, five years, vote aye, Novak votes aye.
Stefan guy.
Pitch aye.
Okay, motion carries, opposed, none, okay, motion carries, yours all set. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Weatherall. Next up, petition twenty twenty-three dash five, Alex Weatherall, new sign. Twenty-three South, twenty-three South Main, no, twenty-one South Main, sorry. Um, for the Dunkin' Donuts, which is looking good, you got the landscaping in, it's, it's got the little tree there, it's, uh, it's getting spiffed up. Um, what is, what, what is your proposal to us, sir?
You know, Rick, I wanna hand it to the professional who is, uh, Bill Gavigan.
Okay, great.
You know, people, people should understand it's twenty-one and twenty-three South Main, twenty-three South Main is the Dunkin' Donuts, twenty-one South Main is my gas station convenience store. Got it. I, I own the property, I have a lease with my tenant. The lease will take effect when he exits twenty-one and moves into twenty-three. The side package and Bill Gavigan's work is specifically on behalf of and, and paid for by my tenant, the Dunkin' franchisee.
Got it.
So, Bill, you know, you know, Rick, I mean, my personal belief is that for you and your board and Butters and neighbors on this call, I think what what I would suggest is let Bill walk everyone through the, the side package per se, just to tell a story about what the proposal is.
That, that'd be great, and, and if I hear you correctly, sort of the, the legal footing is you're the applicant because you're the property owner, but technically this is something one of your tenants is asking for.
That's, that's how I see it.
Okay, got it, and, um, and as I read the petition, there were some things that came in with the petition that looked like signs on the building and stuff like that. The, the only.
Not, but not, Rick, not the petition, I mean, we, you know, Bill, again, I try, I try to be precise, cause I don't want anyone to call to, to sort of, to, to perceive that I've misrepresented anything. My, my, my instructions, for example, and Bill has done a good job of following them based on my experience with you and everyone else for thirteen years is, you know, I, you know, well, I think what matters to people is to, is to, is to be given an opportunity to see to the maximum extent possible, what, what we would propose, this property is gonna look like in this, in this evening's conversation with respect to signage. We, we did hang just on Monday, the so-called building signs, and the reason we did that is that you know, what, what I understand frankly through Genie is that we're permitted to do that. And having addressed the ZBA's, for instance, desire, this goes back a year and a half, to sort of move away from the Dunkin' Colors and use something a little bit different, we did that.
Yep, I remember.
I think the timing was useful, because it does give you, and I think more importantly, neighbors or people who are in interest, a sense of, of, of directionally, thematically, what this thing's gonna look like.
Right.
But there are other, you know, what, what we're proposing is, there are other accouchements, if you will, that follow the same theme that, you know, my franchisee would like approval to, 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 to put up.
Okay, and, and just, and, and Mr. Gavigan, we'll get to in just a second, but and Alex, thank you for confirming what was my understanding, look at the petition, which is, you're not looking to change the building signs, we kind of deal on that and you're sticking with that deal. Got it, and is, is there a, is the signage for the, um, what's the technical name for the thing you drive up to after you go around and you're, you're headed down, headed down the hill, the, uh, the ordering station?
Menu board.
The menu board, thank you. Is, was that, did we approve that in twenty twenty-one or is that a new one too?
Well, it's a, it's a, I think it's a, it's a very pertinent question, Ron, and, and you know, the, the, put it this way, the property right now, I, I would argue, and I don't think you'd, I don't think you'd argue against, is permitted to host a menu board. But again, one. Right. But, but, but again, you know, as a common sense matter and as a matter of, you know, respecting ones, neighbors and, and the governance of the town, if we prevail, you know, two things will be different. One, it'll be in a slightly different location in parentheses, actually, it'll be practically invisible from the street.
Yeah.
Two, it'll be a digital menu board. Meaning, you know, you with some switches from the number twenty-three, you can, you can change it and, and turn it off and that sort of thing. Whereas now invariably the rain leaks into the Plexiglas and the, and the sheets fall down, this sort of. So in other words, there'll be some changes, and I would never presume to undertake, to put in place those changes without you and your board being aware of it. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I do, and, and, and I thought, and I haven't, I thought moving the menu board was on, you know, maybe the final design wasn't there, but I think you proposed moving it last time, because one of the safety improvements was that moving the menu board made a longer queue space, and therefore people wouldn't back out into, into South Main Street. And I think we all thought that was great.
Yeah, you're right, and that, but those, you know, you're right, Ron, and I, so I don't mean to miss, miss, I don't mean to, you know, confuse, I just that but that was theoretical insofar as there were no, there were no drawings, there were no elevations, there was no sense of what it was gonna look like.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but, but, but the location is the same as, okay, got it. All right, so, uh, 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 enough, uh, obiter dicta, as the judges say. Um, Mr. Gavigan, tell, tell us what you'd like here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, again, uh, Bill Gavigan with point signs, um, I guess kind of how I got here, um, I know there's been some meetings and some discussions before I was ever involved. Uh, Genie, Alex, and, uh, honestly, um, Chris, to a certain degree, have been really helpful in getting me to understand where we are, uh, with all this and, and kind of what we're here to review tonight. Um, I, basically, the package that we have is everything, so it's, it's everything in the package, uh, that we're proposing for the Dunkin' Donuts, um. So those two wall signs are still in there, um, but again, um, I think it's better to show the overall view of what we're doing to the property instead of removing certain things and, and, you know, not kind of discussing all of it. Um, and my understanding is those two wall signs were the only things that were approved, and, uh, really the purpose of the meeting is uh, to kind of review the rest of it and, um, you know, try to seek, uh, the, the board's approval, um, on what we're trying to propose. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, I, uh, to Alex's point, I think it would be good if I could share the screen, if I
Yes, please.
Take the screen and kind of walk us through, um, only done this once or twice, but let me see how we can do here. Try to move this in. And if I can ask, can everyone see the, uh, the package titled twenty-three South Main Street? Yeah, yes, okay. Again, I've got three screens, I'm never sure if I'm, if I'm on the right one, so. Um, so, um, yeah, this is, uh, this is basically our, our package as a whole and trying to walk through it, I think two of the things that, um, uh, Alex mentioned, um, Uh Alex mentioned um if everyone has not seen it whether or not I know we're on Zoom whether or not you've been to Town Hall um. But uh we we do have uh the two building signs are up um one here on the corner um. Facing the street and then the other here on the side uh just before the drive-through um. But uh as we kind of get through uh the package I guess. This is just an overview of the whole site uh the convenience stores over here the the new Duncan is is uh down here to the right and um. Uh Main Street is is here um to the left those two wall signs are located here um the impression of. How the package needed to go when I was kind of introduced to the project and it was brought to me. Um originally I thought everything that was sent from the architect was approved. So I kind of put a first package together with that and then obviously came to understand uh from conversations with Alex and Genie that you know that wasn't. Completely true so uh we've gone and made some adjustments to our original one uh to try to kind of make sure that we're in compliance and. Really there wasn't a whole lot of changes it was more the the ground sign uh we had to make some adjustments to the size of that which was still minimal but. Um anyway so looking at the site the two wall signs are here we've got um potentially uh two directional signs. Um located here one coming out of the drive-through and then one. They actually where there is one existing right now just directing the traffic into the drive-through lane from the road. Uh we have a new ground sign proposed here um and then as you come through the drive-through. We have a height detector here which is actually existing it's just really the new images is gonna be there. Um with the next gen image which is Duncan's new image um which is part of the rebrand obviously this is a new location. Uh but with the timing of it all uh we're now changing from Dunkin Donuts to Dunkin um and then our um. Our order point is in the back basically the speaker um with that digital menu board that Alex was mentioning and then you come around. To the uh to the um. Drive-through window essentially um so uh going through the items these are the elevations uh we've got those two building signs here. Um again front left side rear um right side um. Going through the signs again. Everything here sign wise is what was approved sizes colors um. And essentially we're doing externally illuminated so we've got black backer panels um with um. Basically the gold uh painted dimensional letters uh their their PVC letters painted a a a gold color. Um per what was approved previously uh that is those two then we kind of move to trying to stay with that same theme. On the directional signs also um not illuminated um. We've got uh two um directionals here uh sticking with that black and gold theme we have done some of these. Some towns are strict to that black and gold especially in the Northeast so this is an exclusive to us with Duncan we have done that. On several locations before so we've kind of got some standards put together for that so um this kind of follows that that is the the one. Drive-through pointing in and then the one coming out of that drive-through lane. Um similar to probably what the stop sign is closer out to the road uh as you're coming out of the drive-through lane it's uh. See you soon just thanking everyone for coming and then um a do not enter making sure traffic does not pull into that side of the uh into the drive-through lane. Um then we've got our our monument sign um. Really we had to tweak this a little bit because of other zoning regulations but same same style same idea um. Regulations this is within what's allowed for square footage I think we're allowed twenty four we scaled this back to twenty one I think originally we had it at twenty five. But we made some adjustments because nothing could be wider um than than six feet in any direction. So we had to make some some changes there six foot in height six foot in width uh same thing it's got um. A top um lighting element here for external lighting uh the. Face the base everything is black and then obviously the gold trim uh everything is dimensional there and then the dimensional letters on the front. With the Duncan in the drive-through um. Pretty basic uh monument sign that goes in line with the new image but of course with the standard colors. Um this is just some production stuff we don't need in there um and then uh we've got our our order point um. Essentially um. Kind of coming through and I guess I kind of want to jump a little bit as as we're trying to create that image of coming through the drive-through. As the cars are coming up obviously right now you have that height detector the menu board the big orange awning. Everything is kind of right there attached to the building on the left um. Now as you're coming up this is gonna be the the new height detector replacing what is there this is the new image. Luckily kind of the colors that was I guess determined in the previous meetings for the building and everything. Um stays in line with the next gen colors and the imaging in the sense of the grays and 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 the whites and. Kind of those those moot colors um are really what the new next gen image is. And then the magentas and and the orange are meant to be subtle but accent out with more of a gray canvas. Uh there's different grades which obviously are are kind of shown on on the building uh right now with the new building. But as you're coming through you're gonna have this new um height limit bar height detector um located at the front. Marking the drive-through it's at the beginning um so again I know for the locals you're all gonna kind of know where that is. But this is a way to kind of brand the beginning of the drive-through lane uh Duncan calls it their gateway um I still think it's a height detector however you want to label it. Um and then as as you come in and you kind of turn that corner and you go back around. This is uh our order point this is to the next gen image it actually was part of the old Duncan image as well. Um and uh this is essentially a speaker and the microphone as they turn and they go around to the back you're gonna have. This back there basically it's got a little bit of down lighting creating just a a a safe lit environment essentially. Um is the idea with that and um and coverage for the weather. So it's really just a meant to to cover you from the rain the snow whatever you have going on there um and uh and and the idea after that. Is just ahead on the left at an angle um is when you're gonna see um the digital menu board. So the menu board is essentially almost half the size of the existing one. Um it actually is less than half if you figure the wings and the the frames that come off from each side um. Really the benefit to these menu boards it's definitely part of the new image um. Which ties into the operational side it's it's really critical to their operation and the way that it communicates. Through their computer system and their reporting and 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 operationally how it works and again I'm not in operations but. That is a main component to to the new image and then the new branding that they're trying to uh to roll out. Um with 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 the new next gen but essentially I think the benefits to having this as opposed to like what Alex said. With the old static ones a lot of those old boards honestly are over thirty years old I'm not sure how old that one is it certainly doesn't look like it's. It looks like it's been around a little while the lights go out in it the the divider bars the retainers they fall out the panels fall out. The like you said the water gets in behind the lenses it. This is a massive improvement um. Not only to the guest experience but just the aesthetic appeal of being in the drive-through and and how it communicates back to the guest. Everything about the screen is completely static it gives you a little order confirmation in the bottom right hand. As you're placing that order it just basically lists it to you and then as you drive away it disappears the next person it gives them that again it's a small. Portion in the corner everything else is static nothing moves the lighting of it. Really is great too these essentially they're Samsung screens so uh they are. Self-adjustable um I think is is really the best way I know a lot of the towns um. Especially some smaller towns that have some concerns with some of the lighting um. These adjust to the ambient light so they're brighter during the day. As as the sun goes down they scale down not to mention they are monitors they're they're TV screens they can be regulated. Um if need be I haven't had any experiences where that's needed uh but they do have that capability if we needed to do so. Uh one of the benefits to the menu board and that order point is. As you come around the back I think Alex kind of mentioned it earlier. Everything is really hidden because it drops down behind um and then I I believe Alex has a propane tank there. Um and then the grade actually drops down as well and it's behind the wall I really and I'm not sure exactly what those heights are. I would imagine you'd never see this menu board which is just under six feet tall um and um. And again the uh the order point is a little bit taller obviously because cars have to get under it. Um but but again I think it still would be pretty pretty obstructed.
Can I ask a question is the is the grading of the drive? Pretty much the way it was prior to the construction?
It it it's the way it was it 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 was. Approved Ron as part of their site plan approval.
Yeah.
And I believe it's been built to as per site plan approval so I do not believe. The uh change the 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 grading of this ordering area is any different than has was approved in the site plan a year and a half ago or whatever.
I understand that but oh I. But had did did the did the road was the road raised in any way? During the construction?
Well no it's a it's a very pertinent question Ron the if you and I. I don't think you're a Duncan coffee drinker but if if you if you took that route. What you'd find is that. In all the earthwork. We've significantly reduced the incline. From the lowest point so in others if you turn and head toward what'll be the new drive pickup window. And your taillights are facing east toward my wetland that's the lowest point. And that point is somewhat higher I don't know how much higher on twelve inches. So that the effect is you've got a. Yeah you've got a much. You've got a noticeably shallower incline back up to Route twenty seven.
So I remember when.
The grade at the menu board. Is well below the parking area right?
It is below I I I don't know exactly how many but that 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 grade has hardly changed if you can picture it I've had three. Trash cans there. For a long time. And God they get they get filled up.
It it and it's and it's at the back edge of the.
Yeah so Ron I mean I just just by visually if if the we've we've hardly moved those three the elevation of those three trash cans. And that's where and Chris Canny knows this because he's seen it that's where the you know the concrete footings are that that in theory hopefully that. The menu would be attached to.
Yeah.
And and so for good good bad or indifferent as I say it's gonna be invisible from the street because. It is it is depressed down below and it's behind a hundred gallon or five hundred gallon propane tank.
Okay Mister Mister Gavigan I I have an important question for you I hear a great deal about how this fits. Duncan's new experience and their and their new everything and their new flashing lights and and all that stuff. Um and that's that's grand I I wonder if you could describe for us how much time you spent with the. Site plan approval historical commission approval and the approval of this board. In designing these things because it looks like the answer is none at all. And that would be disappointing but if that's the answer it is what it is.
Mr. Novak like like I mentioned when I first got on the call I wasn't part of any of those previous meetings and and.
But they're all of record you could you could have read them.
Um and and again nothing here is flashing um just just to state that also um all the signage is externally illuminated. Um the only components that are illuminated are are behind that wall.
Right but but Mister Gavigan the it's playing on the twenty twenty one application that the monument you. Want to put in is in a public street it's not even on the property.
Yeah that Bill knows that the the. You're you're talking about the what we refer to as the ground sign Rick.
Yeah the ground side I mean there there's a whole bunch of stuff here that's not in your site plan that didn't come to us that probably didn't come to historical. Um but certainly the ground sign just leaps out as a. Not only is it not ten feet back in the pavement but it's not even on your land.
But Rick in fairness neither are the existing ground signs.
Well the little in and out ground signs that were approved for by by the planning board when I was on it because I I approved them and I suggested them. Uh yeah the town agreed to put those in the townway. But now you want to put a six foot high Duncan monument sign in the townway and I'm I'm not sure the town is signed off on that just from an ownership standpoint.
Yeah well that's that's and that's the that's exactly why we're having this meeting that's that's frankly and Bill knows this because I opened up a can of whoop ass on him and my franchisee this is why. Rick this is this is why I urge these fellows to come before you in April but.
Yep okay alright fair fair enough fair enough we're getting we're gonna edit ourselves I understand I understand the position you're in. Alex and I and I appreciate it okay so Mister Gavigan you hadn't really finished your your proposal so. Please make your proposal because then we can try to discuss it.
Sure sure thank you uh really I mean we kind of have gone through the entire package the only other point that Alex um really wanted to make sure that. We showed um was what was gonna happen with the existing sign uh at the gas station just trying to forecast that. Those questions might come up in the meeting uh so we did a rendering here of of what Alex's intent would be here. Um obviously the Duncan is in here now the idea is once it is moved over. Um if we're granted and we get that ground sign and this can come off of there this would essentially. Same color as the rest of the sign just put a blank panel in there to fill in that space uh so it just looks as presentable as it possibly can.
Yeah that's Alex's latter sign and he gets to decide who goes and that he comes to us and we we talk with him.
Okay I'm I'm a little uh. Infused about the the color of the signage is the uh. Is the pumpkin and uh. Raspberry color scheme back that's what we shot down last time. Yeah I'm sorry which which um Mister Fitz which signs are you talking about? Well if you scroll back. Oh there's some there's a height detector?
But that's a new sign as far as I'm concerned.
Well again I I you know again I I have to I have to be a little bit particular I uh I'm not a lawyer but I'm in a room full of lawyers. It's not it's the sign itself is new as a piece of technology it is replacing. A height limiting sign it's already there Rick so just you know it's important to me that we be reasonably precise on on.
Okay.
Appropriately okay.
Okay fair enough but uh is there is there a visual of what's there now so we can see it?
I don't have that.
Okay alright well. Okay excellent oh there we go okay. So that doesn't say Duncan's. That says clearance eight foot six.
The other the other doesn't say Duncan either that do you mean by because of the color?
Yeah yeah I mean you know you know if the answer is it's 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 a safety thing of of trying to to do clearance I think we're. In favor of that and probably the signs there looks looks awesome. What what's wrong with it from a safety standpoint?
I I I personally think it looks a little tired and worn and would be much better with a replacement but.
Okay alright alright fair fair enough um okay so. Um a- as to Mister Fitch's question on the building. Um are you proposing any changes at all? In the signs on the building from what we approved?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Okay so these these are just new renderings of what we approved last time.
Correct.
Okay.
And what's the coloration of the uh the new signs the monument sign and. There it's exactly the same they're they're constructed the same same materials same colors. So as you see here those are the two that were approved that are on the building right now. Um and then the directional signs are the same along with the ground sign.
Okay um and can I ask you to stop sharing for a moment because I would like to share.
Yeah yeah yeah.
But 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 don't go away because we definitely want to see it see all this stuff and get some good renderings. Okay. Uh let's see if I can get back to this. Oops take me a second hold on. Okay uh can people see my screen?
No.
Okay I didn't do it right I'll try again let me try again hold on. How about now?
Yep.
Okay so just to catch up Zach. And Mister Gavigan um this heavy dark line. This is the property line. This is where the ownership ends. And because Route Route twenty you know long before Alex was there long before I was here long for anybody was here Route twenty seven was relocated. So the pavement got moved out here but the street line the town still owns all of this. And you're right they're very small signs that we on the planning board approved back when I think the first Dunkin Donuts went in back when I was on the planning board. In and out here little safety signs. But. The monument sign you're talking about in this island. Is on town land. So you you're not even the right applicant and even if you if you scale off the ten feet back in the pavement which is in our sign by law. There's no even if you did on it there's no room. So I, you know, I, 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 I like your signs on the building that are what we approved. And certainly the, um, the ordering area makes some sense. You gotta have an ordering area and moving it further back in the street makes some sense, but but at least I want to hear from my other board members, but I'm very troubled by a monument.
May I, Rick, you know, for goodness sake, this is why we have hearings. This is why I petitioned with Bill and with Jeannie to get to you as soon as I possibly could. If Bill isn't, if Bill forgot, then the franchisee, I can't even recount to you how many times I've walked with everybody, attached their franchisee and showed them this property line. I've told this story more times than I can remember, okay? So we're coming, we're coming to you with all due respect with a proposal to continue what history says has worked and you, as it turns out, were on the planning board and made this work. And put a sign on this island, which Laura, my wife and I created with Sean's help. It is a massive improvement in aesthetics and egress safety and on and on and on.
Right, but Alex, 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 Alex. You're conflating two different issues. One is who has the legal right to apply as the owner of that property? And who has the right to say what goes there as the owner of the property? And that party is the town, not the zoning board. It's the Board of Selectment. The second issue is what would we do as a board in terms of proving sites? And, and that is properly before us and we can certainly talk with you about that. But we do not have any right to grant rights in the town's property. So, so we, 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 we're, we're just a permit granting authority. E- even if, even if we go with you, you're going to have to go to the Board of Selectmen and get a lease or something or for a right to be there. What, what concerns me and the reason I'm glad you're here, the reason I'm glad you're here is the other thing about that sign. And I did this myself the other day. If you put yourself walking as if you're in a car, it blocks the view of on the, all the oncoming traffic. It's six feet tall. So I, I, I don't know what Sean's going to think about it from a safety standpoint, but the reason for that landscaping, that little tree is it doesn't get in the way.
Well, I, you know, I think that's a little bit misleading, Rick. I mean, I, I thought frankly, I thought that you and your board would have the very, you know, practical question is where's the best location for that tree? Maybe the sign, maybe the sign goes behind the tree. In other words, east of the tree. Yeah, I, in other words, it's an open question to me, even if the sign hypothetically is approved by the select board, you know, where you'd want that sign. So this, isn't this, isn't this, isn't this why intelligent people have meetings and discuss these things?
And, 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 and we're in that meeting. We're in that meeting. I'm, I'm just trying to explore with Mr. Gavin and, and, and your franchisee who's not here, what they were thinking about putting a sign on somebody else's property, uh, that wasn't approved in the prior uh, prior, you know, you worked very hard. No, no, let me finish. Alex worked very hard to get these permits for a very long time. Um, and I don't think he was always happy with our board. I don't think he was always happy with every board. But he has done a very, very good job in a very, very difficult permitting process. And that's some of my frustration of someone coming in after the fact and saying, change it all around. So, sorry, Zach, go ahead. That was an interruption.
I was, I was just curious how the, how the permanent permit process went for changing, you know, making alterations to the town property. If there's a, a Reader's Digest explanation. You know, I, I don't need to get into, I, I can talk to, I can, I can, you know, bother Alex, uh, another day to find out that information if it's.
Zach, Zach, I have no idea because it was many, 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 many years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, and, and I'm not a municipal lawyer, so this is, this is, this is, but we are on tape. So this is guesswork. But I believe what you would need would be a lease of some type from the town uh, of, uh, as some grant of rights, licensed lease or something from the town to build, you know, a commercial advertisement on their site. Um, and then we would have to decide whether we wanted to approve it. And I have to think, wait a second, let me finish. You had site plan approval here too. I have no idea how this fits into your site plan approval.
But again, I think this is, we're taking this sort of rate way, way offside the reservation. I'm, before I, before I have that hearing, I might, I might put in a claim at the South Minnesota kind of registered deeds for adverse possession, you know.
You can't adversely possess a town. I'm sorry.
Well, I, I might, nonetheless, I mean, I do, I, I do all the landscaping on that property. I mean, so that, you know, let's talk like reasonable adults.
Right.
I, 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 I thought we were. Okay. Other, you know, we haven't even gotten, I'm sorry, Mr. Gavin, are, are you finished with your presentation or do you have more to say? Because if you do, you get the floor is yours.
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome. Um, and I think there are members of the public who wanted to speak on this. Let me stop my shares. We can all see each other a little better. And, uh, anybody from the public want to speak on this? Ed Rose? You, you gotta unmute yourself, Ed.
Can you go back to what you just shared?
Oh, yeah, I can, you, you, the, the, the big overhead, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I don't realize where the property line was.
Yeah.
But, uh, the but ballad out here by the, on the other side of the property line, is that already there?
Nope, that's something they're gonna build.
That's something.
And that, and that was approved in their site plan.
It was approved by who?
Um, well, uh, planning board approves the site plan generally. Ron, keep me honest, I think, um, historic looked at the whole thing for the impact on the historic district and the historic church next door. And I think we looked at it as an overall because we had to give the overall permit to move the restaurant, put in a, um, uh, put in a drive-through window and, um, and approve the signs on the building.
So that was approved.
Yep.
That was approved of property. Town property.
Yep.
So you're saying over here where the trees are, where he mows and all that, and the signage is too high. But that's approved, but over here for these signs are not approved?
No, these little signs here, exit, can you see my cursor? Those little ones?
They're not approved.
They're, but, no, well, they, the little ones for enter and exit were approved in nineteen ninety six. I think when they last redid the, 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 the station layout and Alex, I think that was even before you owned it.
I bought it in two thousand and ten.
Yeah, okay. So, so it was, it was, wasn't even you. And I think the little drive-through sign, I'm not sure if that got a permit or whether somebody just put it in. Um, but again, it's low and small. Nobody's objected to it yet. But what, what the proposal right now is to put a six foot high sign right where my cursor is, blocking the view of this person coming out of this traffic.
I can see what you're saying, but the town already approved him to have this extension off of his property. So if they modified the sign's height, so I'm trying to think as these cars are coming out.
But a- a- as I say, there, 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 there are two different things. As to the design of the sign and how big it is and stuff like that, that is up to us. And even if we say yes, he's going to have to have a separate conversation with the town about the right to put it there.
So it's just.
Hey, we, we, we're sorry, with the Board of Selectmen, the, the town is confusing. I'm sorry, I miss it.
I hear you now. I just think that Alex done, he has done a great job. The building fits where it should. You can't really see it from the road in the sense of the height. You know, you're a lot higher from the road. And what he wants, I think the exit signs could be simply modified to make it all work. As you know, once they see Dunkin' Donuts, people are going to pull in.
Right, and that's good.
Yeah, I just, what bothers me is where the town allowed him to build this proposed boulder and, uh, which is on their property, so. It, it looks like the size of the sign. I'm sorry, Alex, but I, I can understand where they're coming from, but you have done one hell of a job getting it in here. You put a lot of effort into it. So, um, especially where they're allowing you to do this, and maybe a smaller sign would help, but I now I just think, yeah, right, on the right track.
Yeah, I think, I think Rick's right. This is again, I said, people, it's, it's fashionable ever since Dilbert to disparage meetings. I think meetings run well. And I've told Bill Gavin several times, you can count on Rick Novak running a very good meeting. I'm not bullshitting. But the reality is this is why you get intelligent people together with different opinions sometimes and you come out of it with better information. Ri- Rick's making a very, very good point. Six feet is probably too tall. If, if it's gonna, anything that's gonna endanger pedestrians, for instance, we should, we should stay away from it. My, why I, where I get hot, and Rick knows this, he's just clever. Where I get hot is the, is the sheer tediousness and the, and the, and the and the, and the sort of Alice in Wonderland governance in this town. I mean, I couldn't possibly start with a select board on this question. I have to come to you.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't, and I, and I don't like being chastised for that. And I think that's, I think that's fair.
No, 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 I'm not, uh, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not chastising you for not going to the Board of Selectmen. I'm, I am, uh, disappointed in the sign designers that they didn't, uh, spend a little more time with what we did. Uh, and that's not your fault and that's not their fault. And then we can all yell at each other or we can try to figure out what the best way forward is. And I'm in favor of that second one.
I mean, I think, I think just from a, a legal perspective and that, this is not legal advice, that, you know, this is not legal advice. I'm going to take my legal hat off. I think an easement is an, is an easy thing to handle if this is what's required, uh, to, to put up a sign, Alex. Um, and, you know, I guess the question is, you know, before the board this evening, can we, can we render an opinion, uh, as to what the sign would look like if it were allowed, if it were, you know, if, if all things were allowed?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, I, 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 I think Zach, we can reach the issue of what we think the sign is, uh, you know, w- whether a sign should be there and what it would be like i- if it were allowed. And then, you know, we don't say, I'm not suggesting with your appearance to say, gosh, we can't possibly even think about this until you go to the Board of Selectmen. I think I'm saying, listen, there's a big problem here that can't be pretended away and that has to be part of the resolution. That's all.
Can I say something else?
You can.
Menu board in the back, where is positioned? You'll never see that from the street. That is one ideal layout there. So everything going forward uh, other than the street signs. I mean, and if anything, because he wants to open, I'd let him go ahead and leave the street signs coming forward, you know, later on the next meeting or something like that, but at least let him go with the menu sign so he can open up his doors. Um, I think that's important because he has it all there. It is. I, you drive by, you know, you have to really look now. It really, it sits in there well. This is down in the hollow. That's my opinion, so.
Okay, so, so Alex and Bill, can I try to, um, um, organize sort of what we're talking about here? I'm sorry, Chris Candy, you were gonna, you were next. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just have a, a question or two. Um, a- and this is more because you guys do the sign permits, uh, and I don't. So I'm going to ask. Is there anything that, uh, precludes a ground sign from being mounted on a pole? Does it become a pole sign? At that point, or, 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 or we, you know, if we're talking about an elevated sign or some other sort of thing, does that fall under the same category and allow for the same area?
I, I, I think they're in the same category.
Right.
Go ahead, Ron.
There's a maximum height for a ground sign.
Okay, okay.
Which is, which is twice.
All right.
Which is twelve feet.
Yep. Yeah, okay. So I, I think. So, so I guess, I guess my question is if, if traffic is, uh, sightlines are an issue, we have the opportunity to either go up or we have the opportunity to go down, right? So, so that's a solvable problem, whether, however, somebody wants to solve that.
Right.
My, the thing that I see that I think is the bigger issue for the board is the ten-foot setback to pavement would require variance.
Right.
Or some other sort of relief.
Right.
And not to say that the board's not going to be comfortable doing that, but it's something that should be addressed.
Um, right.
You know.
Yeah.
Other than that, I think, you know, it, it, as far as where should a sign go for this business, that certainly seems like the right place for it. Um, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't think it makes sense to have it up on the, um, on the gas station uh, pole anymore. It's a separate building now. It's in a different location. Um, so I can see why they want to put this on here. But, um, it's just a question.
Let me try to, let, let, let me try to make sure that we're talking about the same apples to apples here. It, the way I can, the way I score it, and Alex, I'm looking at you as I'm saying this to make sure I got it right. And you too, Bill. I think we've got four things we're talking about. The wall signs on the sides of the building, which sounds like it's a non-issue because those are just renderings of what we approved already, right? Um, second, we've got the, the ordering sta-, I'll call it the ordering station. Is that the right name for it or close? Um, where, where the menu order is at the back. Sorry.
The order point, yes, yes.
The order point. And while I don't think that was teased out in our prior decision, Ron and Jonathan, uh, certainly.
It was, it was located, it was.
Right, correct.
On the site plan. And that's the extent of it. We never saw the design of it or.
Right, but, but its location was clearly disclosed to us and, and, and. Um, so we've got to talk about that. So we've got a new thing, which is a, a different height detector, and I'm not sure which way that goes. And then we got a fourth thing, which is the new monument. Is that kind of the universe of stuff we're talking about?
A- a- and then the only other thing I, I would add to that, um, Mr. Novak, would be the directional signs, the two directionals.
Right, the low direction, new, new low directional. Thank you. Good ad. All right, there's some woman named Novak who has appeared. Supposedly according to her background, I think she's off in the White Mountains, but I suspect she's actually downstairs.
She's actually off in the Green Mountains, but that's okay. Um. Yes, yes. Um, Nathan Hill Road. Um, I'm speaking not as a member of a board, but just as a member of the public. The one part of this that troubles me, um, is the monument sign, which I don't think appeared anywhere on any of the original, um, plans, landscape plans or site plans that were approved by this board, the planning board, the historic district commission. Um, and I kind of question the necessity for that sign. Um, there's a lot of other signage on the building. It's very obvious. It's a Dunkin' Donuts. It, it kind of, it changes the approach and the subtlety of the landscape and the design.
Okay. Um.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Mr. Novak, thank you. Um, Mrs. Novak, thank you. Um, I, I understand the point. Um, I, I think the colors are meant to allow it to fade off a little bit. It doesn't have the oranges and the raspberries out by the road. I think the idea there was to try to let it blend in a little bit more of the property. And I think one of the, the reasons of this property really having a need for a ground sign, and you may disagree, but the building itself, even though it does have signage on it, it is recessed back quite a bit. So I feel like people could be up on that building, driving down the street before they know the Duncan is even there, where if they're approaching with the sign out by the road, they would see that. Um, and, and, and then Mr. Novak too, one of the points I want to make to the sightline concerns, and I completely understand it, and, and it's, it's it's an issue with all signage, um, and ground signs in general, and we deal with it all the time. I completely understand. But I think the regulations and, and, um, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong here too. I feel like the, the points in the regulations about the ground sign kind of address that a little bit in the sense that we're required a ten-foot setback. That ten-foot setback is to make sure that the sign is not too close to the road. So when the cars pull up to the road, they can see around it. Ten feet should give you space to do that. And then also the six-foot restricted height in most towns as a monument sign, that's also because they want cars to be able to see over it. Right. Not to say every car will allow you to do that, but those two things, when you're speaking of a monument sign, that's usually a point of how it's written in the regulations, not just design.
But Bill, you, you skipped right past in the design of this, the requirement that it be ten feet back from the pavement. It's not ten feet back from any of the pavement. As a matter of fact, if you scale from the pavement along the edges of that island, there's a little spot about one square foot at the back of it. That's more than ten feet from any pavement. Because it's an island. And I, I'm not even an engineer or a designer, but I could figure that out.
No, no, and, 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 and I, I think we could certainly go ten feet from that curb line is what I thought we were doing. It's not shown to scale in our package. No, but I think it's, it's not a couple of feet from that curb. It's about ten feet behind it.
Come, it's ten feet from the front edge of the curb, but the pavement goes all the way around the island. And therefore the ten foot from the pavement goes around the island and reaches in.
Okay.
So it's just.
I'm thinking where traffic is coming from the street.
Right, but it's. Yeah, right, whatever. Okay, so, uh, Mr., uh, there's a Matt Clark, who I think has been waiting patiently to speak.
Yeah, hey, everybody. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, I'm a member of the public, just in a butter. I live at One Farm Road and, uh, I actually share, uh, you know, some similar concerns that, uh, that Peggy just addressed. It does seem like there is, uh, you know, I guess first off, I think the last time I was in a meeting around this, uh, there was a lot of conversation about the colors. So it's really, you know, appreciate seeing the sort of the more, you know, subtle, you know, black and gold signage, you know, Alex really appreciate that. Um, you know, I know there was a lot of conversation around that and, you know, definitely like that feels like it fits the character, you know, the district and, and of the town. You know, in a great way. So just want to sort of start with, uh, start with that. Um, that's great to see. I would echo that it. Um, that's great to see. I would echo that it, as you know, as a neighbor, uh, it does seem strange. Like there's this giant monument sign. I don't think anyone is in danger of not realizing there's a Dunkin' Donuts there. I think if you drive down twenty-seven, it's in the same location. It's not like this is new. Everyone who's driving up and down that road knows that there's a Dunk. And I think if you're, you know, everyone knows it's moving, you know, it's like you already have a great customer base. So I don't think that's really a big deal. And if you're driving by it, you can always just loop back around. I think, you know, I think the pedestrian safety is a pretty big concern. I mean, you have, you know, kids who are walking from my house, kids who are walking from up the street. We see them around on the corner all the time. You know, if you have a six-foot thing there, you know, we've got a small car, there's a, you know, if you've got an SUV, maybe you see over six-foot sign. If you don't, you know, like there's kids walking, there's kids riding bikes, you know, scooting by, like, are you going to see those? Like, I don't know, you're on your phone. Something bad happens. Um, I also would want to understand why, you know, there there are signs and businesses right up the street. You know, you've got Art Specialties, you've got BPT, you've got the, I guess, the Baby Studio, uh, Baby Photo Studio, but you know, those businesses are limited to very small signs, you know, wooden signs by the road and, you know, why is this business literally in the same district, you know, being allowed to sort of do something that is significantly different? Breaks frame from that. And, you know, this is, it's going to be huge. It's next to a historic church. We have a historic house and, you know, it's going to be visible from, you know, every window in our house. If this ends up being where it is, and I appreciate, you know, the chairman noting the sort of the issue over the land ownership. Um, you know, but it's, this is a pretty big thing. And, you know, I don't think it's, uh, with all respect to the design crew, I don't think a six-foot, giant six-foot sign is is recessive anyway. That's a pretty big thing. It's going to be sticking on the side of the road. And you know, even if the colors are subtle, the lighting subtle, um, you know, I think there's, there's a lot. I don't think you can make that recessive. I also just want to question because the petition was just for the ground sign, but we've talked about a lot of other signs. So are we commenting on the the menu sign? Are we commenting on the drive-through sign? Like, I just want to be clear because if this is the time, I have some additional thoughts on those, but just want to be clear what we're supposed to be commenting on in this petition.
Yeah, and 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 that's all very helpful. Thank you. Um, Alex, if I can direct a question at you, um, that that may help us at least move forward tonight. The order point being authorized is probably between you and opening or between you and opening successfully. Is that correct?
It's definitely a constraint on opening. Yeah.
Okay, so you you if you had to, you could live with the old one, but it'd be a lot better if you could put up the new one.
We can't live with the old one because they've long since dispensed with the mic in that.
Then they, alright, it's been disconnected essentially. Okay, okay. Um, all right, and.
I'll say, I'll say too, I, you know, Matt Clark's a straight-up dude, and he and I have developed a relationship, not necessarily a friendly one, but it's a very honest. Um, I I really value his remarks and and he asks a very pertinent question. And I said to Bill the other day, I I object, I objected to the way this agenda was written because I frankly wanted, and I've made this clear an hour ago, an open, wide-range discussion of the entirety of the sign package. So my answer to, of course, I'm not the chairman, my answer to to Matt is any questions are valid and welcome.
I I I I agree with you on that. Any questions are valid and welcome. Um, here's, here's where I was going, Alex, uh, and 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 Bill, think about this. I wonder if because the board approved a site plan that had a relocated ordering point, I I'm not offended by the ordering point as a signage matter or as a material change to our special permit. Um, and and I'd be inclined to sort of give them some leeway on that tonight, um, so they can go ahead and open. Um, the rest of it, I think, is a much more complicated, um, situation. And I think I propose that maybe we continue and that Bill come back with sort of a narrative on each and every one of these signs and why they individually and collectively comply with our zoning bylaw and and the site plan. Because, uh, you know, their their size, their setback from pavement, you know, there's a bunch of things in their zoning bylaw, and that's a matter of 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 rolling up your sleeves and doing the nitty-gritty and seeing it, seeing if it complies or not. Uh, Alex, I don't think you should necessarily go to the selectmen yet unless you want to have a friendly conversation with Sean, but that's, that's, that's just a whole another kettle of fish for you. And I, you know.
Yeah.
If you can't, if you can't get permission from us, why bother talking to the select?
You you've got it exactly right. And you know, Ron and Peggy and I know that historic discommission, we have, we had ten meetings and they were knocked down drag out, but good, good came out of it. Let's all admit.
Yeah, but you'd you'd have to go to them, too.
But good, but my point is about raising the HHTC is good, bad, or indifferent. The HTC has no say in signage, you know, so it's, so it all comes back to you, Rick.
Well, um, I I don't know, if 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 there's, if there's a sign that has an impact on historic property, that's, that's not going to be helpful with getting a permit from us.
No, right, but you you, but but let's let the minute state, you know, if you, when you read the HTC rules.
Okay.
You know, you see my point, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 we can listen to the mine discretionary sign. Um, so, uh, board members, your feelings are important to me as always. How how do you feel about this?
I don't like the sign.
The big, the monument?
The monument sign, I don't like it.
Okay.
I was concerned about how the building was going to appear from the street of cars going by and the and the old color scheme and uh, being out of place. Now, uh, add another, uh, substantial sign right by the road that's that's illuminated. There's a lot of, there's a lot of signage on that property. And I I just don't, I don't see the necessity of it. And I think that uh, I value what Matt said about it being visible from his home. And, uh, it's the relationship of this building to the historic, uh, church and the other properties is really important. And and uh, I have to say that I like the building more than I thought I would, Alex. Uh, but, uh, I really don't, uh, see the necessity of of this ground sign. And I I do want to be sure that when we hear more from Bill, that all of the signage is going to be in the color scheme that's on the building now. Everything. Including at the order point.
Mr. Staffic.
I I agree in general with, uh, what Jonathan said, the the ground sign to me is way out of proportion. It's it's much larger than I feel it really needs to be. So that if there were a ground sign, and I prefer that there were not a ground sign, uh, I'd like to see it scaled back in size. That's the ground sign. The overhead protection sign, uh, I don't understand the pink color. You know, we made it made a point of having muted colors on everything. So on the overhead protection, if you replaced the pink color with black, so it would be black and white, uh, that would satisfy me. The order, uh, point, I think the board itself is, uh, is fine with me. I mean, it, you know, it functions. I've seen, there's a, there's a new Dunkin' Donuts in Maynard that I happen to stop by and they, I think they have this same, uh, order board there and and, uh, you know, it's it's functional and it's nice and it's way in the back of the property. So I have no problem with that. I don't see why the, uh, the top of the thing needs to be orange. It, I mean, that could be black. Just like, uh, we changed the other colors, but that's, that's pretty much the extent of my comments.
Okay. Zach.
Um, I echo, uh, Ron and John's comments. I think the ground sign portion is too large for the character, uh, of the town. I would, I would uh, definitely diminish the size if if we're, it were, it were to be kept at all. I think, um, we should, uh, I also, um, agree with Ron's perspective around the the height, uh, the colors on the height, uh, guard or sort of warning. I, you know, I wonder, uh, where the, I would like to see, you know, more detail where the placement is on that. Is that going to be two posts to hold that up or one? I think there there's one now. It sort of looks simplistic. It kind of blends in. I think I'd be concerned about a second stanchion to hold that up, um, which I think is necessary based on the design, but I think aesthetically, um, that's not my, my favorite. Uh, but I agree, we also should probably approve the, uh, order point so that, um, Alex can and his franchisee can open. I don't see any, any particular issues with that. It's set far enough back. It's an improvement in technology. Um, it seems like it could be an improvement in all, in all respects. So, uh, no objections on the order point, um, for approval tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. I just, I'm sorry, can I just jump in just one question on the, on the order point? Like, just because obviously, you know, again, this sort of.
I was just going to ask you about the order point.
Great. Um, so I'm curious, what, uh, what will happen to the order point at night? Because I know we can't see it from the road. It's great. I can probably see it from my backyard, especially if it's going to be illuminated. So what's going to happen, uh, after the store closes with that?
With the order point and the two lights that come down from the top? Is that the question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the, what the lighting situation is going to be after dark, after the store closes and like what the brightness factor is. Because again, like, yeah, it's great. It'll be, you know, hidden from the road, but I'll be able to see it from my house. So.
Right, and 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 by order point, I'm I'm, to me, we're talking about the the vertical column with the speakers and then you still have illumination from that menu board. And, um, Matt, I'm sorry, looking at the building, you're to the right, correct?
He's on the other side. He's on the other side.
Okay, okay. So to the right of the building from the street.
Yeah.
The menu board itself is going to be turned towards the convenience store. It's at an angle. You won't see anything from that. The order point, um, it has lights in it. I don't know, I don't know what the town does if the buil- business is closed. All the lights have to go off. That obviously can be a contingency. I don't, I don't know, I don't know what goes on now, um, with the property. Um, it's, it's certainly reasonable to think when the business closes, all the lights could shut off and that can all be put on a timer. To me, that's, that's something easily enough to be addressed.
That's, that's how we did it. Matt's making a very good point. The, the, you know, that that very aged and somewhat dirty orange fabric canopy that's over the car, there's a, there's a timer on that. Sometimes when the seasons change, people forget, but at night that thing goes, supposed to go off by the timer. What Bill is saying, the same thing can be done with the menu station.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's great. And just, you know, being able to just confirm that, you know, don't want to assume anything, you know, this is the, you know, time to sort of get all that information. So appreciate that. And, uh, just officially for the record, would also sort of echo some of the other comments around the color with the the height restriction. I think the the current sign, uh, you know, even if it, you know, maybe it needs to be refreshed in some way, as Alex was saying, but just the sort of design of it is very recessive, especially for such a tall sign. And I think like, you know, seeing the mockups, especially with the color, you know, bringing that color scheme in line with the other signs, uh, you know, I think would be, would be really greatly appreciated and sort of make what is a pretty, you know, tall structure, you know, as recessive as a structure that size can be.
Okay. So let me, board members, see what you think about this. I suggest we take no action. We're, I suggest that we continue the hearing in in many respects. Um, that we take no action on the wall signs because if in point of fact, he is following our prior decision perfectly, he doesn't need anything from us. He has a decision that allows him to put up those wall signs. And if he's doing something else, speak now or forever hold your peace. Fair enough. Um, as to the order point, I'd suggest that we vote tonight, if if we choose to do so, to modify our prior special permit of uh, um, approval to approve the order point as shown in the plans that are submitted submitted to us in twenty twenty-three, provided that the color scheme match the the signage that we approved on the building in twenty twenty-one, that it have a black top and the lights go off when the place closes, period. I'd also propose that on the height detector, we just take no action right now to give them a chance to go back and think about all this. Uh, because, you know, the height detector, I I get it. If I work for Dunkin' Donuts, I'd try to make it look like a sign, too. And and that's what they're trying to do. And that's what we're trying to say no to. So if it's, if it's just a safety height detector, um, Alex and I've had some fun conversations about, you know, how big a sign, if it's a twelve-foot limit, it's big enough, fifty feet, sixty feet. And I think we take no action on the monument at this point or the low signs. Um, Bill, I think you hear us loud and clear. You're going to have to come back in with a really clear point by point. Here's every single point in the zoning bylaw and how I fit within it. Um, because if you do not, we'll keep sending you back until you do.
Mr. Mr. Novak, if I, if I could, I guess, try to find a little middle ground, um, in 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 that height detector and that canopy, uh, or or the, um, the order point, um, the it's not unreasonable to have these colors changed. If the board thinks that that's what it needs to be, we can do that. I've done that in other locations. Um, actually just recently had a project in Florida. We did the same thing.
I understand.
And and they made us go gray on on the canopy top and gray on the the height detector. So everything you see that's magenta or orange, then goes charcoal. Um, we could certainly go black, but to me charcoal still works. It still fits with the color scheme. Um, that can be done. I guess what I'd like to see is if we could have that approved today and the main reason with the height detector as well, um, is we need to protect the canopy or the 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 order point, which also has coverage that's in the back.
And then. You have a height detector now. You have a height detector now.
Well, that's true. You can leave that there and stop.
Right.
Okay, okay. Hope you're right. I was thinking to protect so cars don't get in and then find out they can't get through, but you're right. There's, there's already one there now.
Right, it it may not be the most beautiful one in the world, and ultimately we may want to approve a different one. But 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 the reason I want to make you come back with the, the whole package is I want you to sit down with our zoning bylaw and make sure all of it works because I think once you've had that one, if you get one smaller ground sign on the island, I think you're going to have to kiss the little ground signs goodbye because I don't think you get three of them. You know, I haven't looked it up, but I want you, I want you to do that homework.
Wrong, but I I feel like the approval is based on your approval.
The approval.
Regulations already.
You 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 have to read our zoning bylaw. It's got like four pages on signs that I I strongly strongly suggest is the most gentle way I can put it. I really think it's in your interest to read that carefully. So so board members, I haven't made it as a vote yet. Um, but what what do you think about the the compromise plan into which we give him, give him his order point with some, with some color changes and and let him come back on the rest of it? Or or we we could say no to things. We can say yes to things. We've got, we've got a lot of options here.
What? I I like your suggestion, Rick. I I would second that.
Well, I I I I think, you know, the the order point is critical to their opening and it's we have to, I always suggest we approve that tonight. And, uh, you know, the height protector, as you point out, there's an existing one and which there now, so they could open and use that. And then the, uh, the ground sign is a bigger issue. I mean, so.
Right, if we if we just continue, we haven't voted it down, so leaves everything open.
Right.
Mr. Fitch.
Well, I I agree with your proposal, Rick, that we um, give them approval tonight for the o- order point. Um, the mod, absolutely with the modified color scheme. And, uh, that everything else, uh, be on hold until Bill comes back and gives us a, uh, delineation of all the signage and how it fits into the bylaw.
Okay. Yes, sir, Bill.
I I I'm sorry, I just, I know we're we're saying order point. I just, I guess I'm I'm asking if if with that, the digital menu board is part of that.
Yes.
Because both are critical.
Yes, I I I'm thinking of it as the thing that you drive up to and talk to.
Yep, 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 for sure, for sure. Yep.
And then. The the Dunkin' Donuts Alexa, right?
And the illumination switches off, uh, when the, when the business is closed.
Right. And and because I'll be writing this up in a decision, do you want me to use the term order point or do you want me to use ordering station? What's, what's the word to use?
No, again, I just want to make sure that the the menu board is part of that decision because they are two separate pieces.
All right, all right. All right, so let me take a shot at a, at a, at a motion here, board members. I move that we continue this hearing as to all aspects of the application, except the order point as shown on the plan submitted to the board in nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-three. And that that. And that that order point that we that we hereby modify our prior special permit grant. To allow that. Order point. As designed and shown on the twenty twenty three plans, provided that. The color scheme shall match. The color scheme we approved for the building signs in twenty twenty one with no differences. The top will be black. And the illumination of the. Order point and the menu board. Will be off whenever the Duncan, whenever the store is not open. And you know, you're gonna have to do that electronically somehow. I don't want to hear that. You know, the second assistant, third shift person who's a seventeen year old who's working their third job forgot to do it. You have, you've got an electronic menu board. I bet you can make it turn itself off.
Nothing but a timer.
I'll say this, Bill. Rick has, there's a history here because Rick insisted, not just Rick, but the board, that I have an on off switch for my my pylon sign.
All right.
I was actually a little bit tired. I was a little bit tardy in making, activating that, but. There's a history here, so.
I get it, I get it. We've never, we'll, we'll make sure that the electrician adds those switches to them, so.
Yeah, it's easy.
It's it's simple.
It's it's a nothing. Uh, Mr. Candy, you're, you're not a voting member of our board, but does this sound like a wise course to you?
I think you're on the right track.
Okay. All right, so that's my motion. Anybody willing to second it?
I'll second it.
Mr. Stafford seconds it. Um, all right, uh, further commentary on the motion. All right, all in favor, say aye. We have to do it by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Definitely aye.
Pitch aye.
All right, Zach, you're off the hook. You don't have to vote. Okay. So. Good luck with the ordering point. Hope you open. Hope it works out to be terrific. And I'm sure we'll talk some more about signs. How's that for a fair, fair summary?
I think it's a, I think it's a very, it's a very positive outcome. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Miss Gut. Sorry, go ahead.
We have a meeting in two weeks. Don't forget.
Yes, 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 we do.
Okay.
So if they wanted to come back in then and they were ready and they're giving us a, you know, a good. Piece of it, but 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 Bill, please, please hear me on measuring ten feet from the pavement everywhere. I think you run out of space pretty fast and. And as Jonathan pointed out, that's not discretionary. That's a variance and we don't give variances. So you you really need to think about that.
Bill, is two weeks enough or do you, is two weeks?
So we'll, we'll try to have to figure that out.
Right.
This is my, this is my last business endeavor for a week.
Okay. Yeah, don't taunt me.
He just, no, Rick, he just decided about twenty minutes ago.
But he needs a vacation. I I I'm sure that we can make it work in two weeks.
Lots of people who've worked on this project suddenly need a vacation. I can't, I can't see what it's about. Uh, Alex is the one who needs a vacation.
Are we two weeks? Have we done the twenty eighth? Is that the day that we're, that's meeting is? I just had to change my flight, so are we not gonna have a quorum if I am in the air uh, and not attending that meeting?
Well, that brings me to Mr. Stafford. Yeah, um, do you want this to be your swan song or do you want to join us on the twenty eighth? You can do whatever you wish.
I would like to join you on the twenty eighth.
Okay.
I have an interest in these signs.
All right, well, good. So that's what, that's what, that's why I hit it at the beginning and said, I bet you're gonna want to stay.
And plus, we need an architect on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, we might. The twenty eighth of uh.
June.
Oh, God.
Oh, you were coming back.
Not, not on the twenty eighth.
You told me.
We moved it, we moved it to the twenty eighth for you. You were coming back the twenty sixth. So we kicked it to the twenty eighth.
Hold on, whoop, this is, but. Timeout. Can't read my desk calendar here. I will be back. I'll be back on the twenty sixth. I will be on the twenty eighth.
Thank you. All right. Um, thank you all for your time and patience.
Hey, Matt, Matt, are you gonna be here the twenty eighth? You're important too, man.
Uh, I mean, I would much rather have it on a different date. It's actually my birthday, but if uh, if I'm celebrating the birthday at a zoning board.
Birthday with the ZB.
That's kind of a bucket list experience.
Sing for you, Matt. We'll sing for you.
You know, you guys bring some cupcakes, you know, we can make it work, so.
All right. Okay, well, it may not even be the twenty eighth. Maybe they, maybe they'll need more time. That's up to them. Okay. Thank you all for your time. Do we have any other business tonight, genie, that we have to do?
You do not, you, I did send you a letter for Sandra Burke when you get a chance and you guys all have the minutes from that meeting also, so whenever.
Is Central Bark the former doggy daycare?
No, Sandra Burke was the yoga, renewal of the yoga.
Oh, Sandra Burke, sorry. I thought, I heard it as Central Bark, like her dogs. Yeah, 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 yeah. She, she, she's over on Park Street. Yeah, Park Drive.
Yes, I sent you that letter, so you can.
Okay, yeah, that that that's a no brainer.
Okay.
Within my skill set. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn from anyone who wanted to make one.
Post no adjourn.
Second. All in favor, aye. Novak, aye.
Definitely aye.
Good time.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.